Okay, we'll call to order this the Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Ellisville Town Council. Chief Foreman, do you want to do the pledge?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our heavenly Father, we come before you again. Just thank you for this beautiful day we've had today. We thank you for the Mother's Day we just finished, and we ask you to be with us all. Be with those who are sick and sorrow. Be with us tonight as we make the decisions to pull up in the town we represent. We have these things, be the same. Amen.
Amen.
Sandy, roll call if you would.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager? Dan Swafford?
Okay, seeing through as a quorum, we'll continue. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
I make a motion for that to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
I will second.
Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First on tonight's agenda is the opening of the bids for the nineteen eighty-seven Shelby Co. twenty-four-foot dovetail trailer.
And since Darla was, I didn't get the bid to Darla, she agreed to let me open it. They only received one. It is from a Dan Taylor, and he is offering twenty-five-hundred dollars, which I believe was the, um, reserve.
Is that correct, that that was the reserve price?
Can you speak for that, Mike Farmer? Or Kip Hetty?
That is over. I think, I think it was only like a two-thousand-dollar reserve, so it's over the reserve.
Okay.
Okay, as long as we meet it. Is there a motion from the council considering this one and only bid?
I'll move to approve the bid.
Second.
Motion in a second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Kip, are you going to contact him and make arrangements for pickup, et cetera?
Yeah, me or Brian Miller. I think Brian Miller has been in contact with Emosel as well, so one of us will get hold of him.
And I do have his information here on the bid.
Okay, thank you. Now I move to resolution. The resolution tonight is Resolution thirteen dash twenty twenty-one, a transfer of funds, motor vehicle highway and local roads and streets. Sandy?
Yes, the street department is going to ask permission, well, Department of Public Works for another leaf loader, and so they came in and visited me this last week, and we went over their funds and transferred a little bit of money so it'd be ready to pay cash for the new leaf loader when it's available this fall. So this transfer is just moving some money from their uniforms and laundry and fleet insurance into their equipment line and in motor vehicle highway and in local roads and streets, money from the signs to the equipment line, and the total transfer is eight thousand dollars.
Okay, questions in the council or comments? Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comment concerning this?
I do not.
Is there a motion then from the council concerning this transfer of funds?
I'll move to transfer funds.
Second.
Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Tonight, there are no ordinances on first ring, however, there are two on second. First is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten to create fund, I believe it's one seventy-nine or I seventy-nine for the American Rescue Plan Act.
This was on the, uh, town council agenda for the last meeting, and it was discussed briefly, but the purpose of this ordinance is just to establish a fund for the American Rescue Plan funds that the town will receive. And as we also discussed at the last meeting, um, we are going to get further instructions or suggestions, recommendations on how to handle the funds from the Municipal Lawyers Association and AIM, which is Accelerate Indiana Municipalities. And so, um, once we receive that, um, we'll be in a better position to, um, figure out what, uh, sort of projects the town wants to use the money for, and we may have to circle back around and amend this ordinance to make it a little more detailed, but I just wanted to go ahead and get the basic ordinance done. So.
Okay. Darla, there were three things I know that they originally said we could spend it on, broadband access, uh, infrastructure like sewers and water. Can you refresh our memories to what the third one was?
Well, um, you can use it, uh, to reimburse the town for expenses incurred after March, I think of this year for COVID. Um, and you can also, um, I don't have all that paperwork in front of me, Scott, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, that's okay. The other thing you can use it for is, um, for grants or, uh, things of that nature to local nonprofits. And if you decide to do the grants, you are going to have to keep track of the grant money and decide for what purposes the grant money should be used.
Okay, but we'll, we'll get more direction as time goes on with that. Is there council comments concerning this ordinance?
Now, this is just simply creating the funds so when we, when we get the money, we have a place to put it, correct?
Yes.
And looking back at my paperwork, it is Fund one seventy-nine, not I seventy-nine. I'm sorry, I looked at that wrong. Any other council comments concerning this? Is there public comment concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, Sandy, I'm sorry, seeing none, we're back to the council for any action.
I make the motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-one ten to create Fund one seventy-nine for the American Rescue Plan Act.
And I will second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next ordinance tonight is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven to update chapter fifty-one of the Ellisville Town Code regarding rates and charges.
As I explained at the last meeting, the purpose of this ordinance is to, um, bring it into compliance with what the town has in fact been charging its customers, also taking into consideration the fact that the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, um, has allowed us to put a forty-nine-cent tracker, um, on it, um, on the charges, and we may come back and, uh, you may see another ordinance here in the not-too-distant future when the city of Bloomington obtains its rate increase.
Okay, but again, those second parts are just the trackers that follow along with other rate increases.
Right. As I explained, the utilities office was charging what they should have been, but it didn't mesh with what the online ordinance said, so the whole purpose of this is to just clean up what's online so that when folks go online, they'll see the actual charges. In other words, these charges and rates were already approved by the I U R C some time ago.
Right, sorry to have interrupted.
That's all right.
Comments or questions about this? Seeing none, are there public comments or questions? Again, seeing none, we're back to the council for action.
I did ask Sandy, I would add a couple of things. I did ask Sandy to take and modify the document slightly to take some of the numbers out of the boldface type. You'll see in the various charts, there's some numbers in boldface type, and those are the rates that the town council approved at the last meeting. So I asked Sandy to take that out of the boldface type just so that, uh, whoever at American Publishing plugs this in online, they'll know that, um, these are not the new rates through this ordinance, if that makes any sense. They're the new rates through the prior ordinance. So if you are inclined to pass it, please pass it as amended.
Okay. Is there action from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve amended ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven to update chapter fifty-one of the Ellisville Town Code regarding rates and fees.
Second.
Motion in a second. Sandy?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under old business tonight is an appointment to the Ellisville Building Corporation. I'll be honest, I have heard nothing from anyone.
I did find a volunteer, if you're interested.
Okay, who would that be?
Amber Regal's husband, well, Amber Regal Wright's husband is willing to serve if you would like.
Council comments or questions about that, or did we have another candidate?
I don't know of any, and I think that is great if you step forward.
I agree. Darla, just to confirm, this, this person does not have to live within the corporate boundaries, correct?
That's correct.
And I know town employees can't be it, but.
That's true.
But spouse, that's fine, correct?
Correct.
All right.
So that would be, his name is Brandon Wright.
Okay, before we get to that, is there anyone else that's currently in the meeting that wants to volunteer for this position to be considered? Seeing none, is there an action of council concerning Mr. Wright?
I'll on it, Mr. Wright, for the appointment to the Ellisville Building Corporation.
And I'll second that when you have the opportunity, Sandy.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you to Brandon for doing this for us. There's nothing listed under the flood report. Mike, did you have anything at all, or are we still pending?
Uh, actually, we just got a report in today. I think they're thirty percent complete on the, um, on the plan, and they are scheduling a site visit possibly next week to come down and discuss some of the particulars. As I get the information, I'll send it to you.
And this is pretty much having to do with the shelving there off of Vine Street? Is that correct, or is it something else?
It does, and they, they pinpointed some, uh, important properties which we've already secured, um, for the project, so I think we're moving forward.
Okay, outstanding. Is there any council questions concerning any of this? Is there any public questions concerning this? Okay, we'll move on then. Under new business tonight is Department of Public Works request to purchase a leaf loader.
I think Kip or Danny's going to talk about it.
Yeah, uh, as you all know, last year we replaced, uh, one of our other leaf loaders. Our second leaf loader is, uh, it's kind of went downhill too. It's a thirty-year-old leaf loader. Uh, we bought it in nineteen ninety-one into an Old Dominion Brush Company leaf loader. Last year, we probably spent, I think Danny figured today roughly over three thousand dollars last year to try to repair it, and before leaf season was over with, it went down again. Uh, so now we're coming to council from the street division and asking to purchase another one like we bought last year. Uh, I submitted three quotes to Sandy, and, uh, the lowest is being from Brown Equipment. It's the same, uh, virtually the same machine we bought from them last year. Uh, and they told me and Danny earlier this year that if we were going to buy one for this season this fall, that we need to get on it. Uh, with the COVID and everything going on, it's hard to get a hold of axles, engines, all the kind of parts it takes to build it. So he said we need to get it in by May, hopefully by the end of May, that, uh, we would have it hopefully by leaf season, or we'll be down to one machine again for this season. So, uh, come to council, uh, ask them to buy a, a leaf machine from, uh, Brown Equipment Company at seventy-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and zero cents, and they're the lowest out of the three quotes.
I did include the quotes in their packets.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one quick comment, if I may, and just directed at the entire Department of Public Works, but specifically at the street department, you guys just do a phenomenal job with taking care of equipment. Again, we're looking at replacing a piece of thirty-year-old equipment. That, just for the general public, doesn't usually happen in municipal government or state government. You just don't have things last that long, and the reason Ellisville does is because these guys really take care of their equipment, and quite honestly, there are not a whole lot of municipalities that go around and pick up people's leaves for free like Ellisville does, so kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
Is there council questions concerning this purchase?
And you do have the money for this?
That's why we did the, uh, resolution at the beginning, to come up with the money to pay for.
Okay.
I mean, we had majority of the money, I don't remember the exact amount, Sandy. I mean, like, we only needed seven thousand dollars to be able to make the whole payment.
Right, so they had, um, what's that, sixty-five thousand available? And we just made, uh, seven thousand dollars worth of transfers to finish it up.
Okay, Darla, do we need, since this is a public hearing for this, to announce the other two bids, or are we good just having it as part of the record?
I think it would be helpful just to tell the public what the other two bids were.
Okay, Kip, if you wouldn't mind, or Sandy, one of you?
I can. Uh, the next bid, uh, was some from Suffolk County Brake. Uh, their bid come in at seventy-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, and then the highest bid was from, uh, ARM or Arm Tough Equipment, and it was seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. And, uh, to kind of explain the reason why it's so much more, Brown Equipment is here in Indiana, these other ones are out of state, and Brown Equipment is going to do a trade-in with our machine, so this is including, I forgot to mention that, this is including trade-in, so they'll take our old machine for this machine here.
Thank you. Is there council action concerning this purchase?
I'll make a motion to purchase the leaf loader from Brown Equipment Company for the Department of Public Works.
I will second.
Motion in a second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pam Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, under the next is a discussion of opening the park shelters.
Yes, I'll take that one. Um, I had, uh, a taxpayer or resident contact me that when they went to go book a shelter, um, they were told we're closed until sometime maybe in July, and my understanding, the council doesn't have authority over that, but I want to make it clear, I think we really do need to be opening up. I, uh, it's, we have surrounding towns that are fully open, pretty, uh, Spencer, Martinsville, smaller towns, uh, bigger towns than us, and I think, uh, we need to really stop taking our, uh, marching orders from the Rose County Health Department any chance we get, because that just is a completely different culture than what we have here. That's my thoughts.
Pam, did you have any comments concerning this?
I agree with William. I think we need to start slowly opening up. Everybody around us says they're having their festivals, um, completely open, they're doing their in-meeting person for their councils, and a lot of people are going to start dropping their money out of town. A lot of people have expressed that. They go to, well, Martinsville, Bedford, and Spencer, and they eat, and they're putting their money there, and if festivals going around us, our town's not going to have that money coming into us, it's going to go to every other town. I would just like to see our money coming back into the town.
I can agree with that, and I also agree that Ellisville is a home rule city, can set its own or not set its own regulations concerning the vast majority of things. However, I think, you know, when we start talking about restaurants and whatnot, they're still governed by the Monroe County Health Department because they do require health certificate. Uh, and while I completely agree that at a certain point, these parks need to be opened, I think that is, quite frankly, and William I've discussed this, so this is not a, a big shock to him. I personally think this is beyond the purview of this council, um, that, as William and I have talked, um, this is a more appropriate question to address to the Parks Board, um, who we have appointed to run the parks. And, um, again, while I'm more than happy to have the discussion, have the sense of the council, I, I think that those in the public that have interest in this should direct their comments to the Parks Board at their next meeting.
And I don't disagree, and as I said to Scott, you know, I just want to get my opinion known and, and get that, but I fully agree, it should be directed to the Parks Board, and this way the Parks Board goes our feelings.
Absolutely. While we're on the topic, is there public comment concerning this?
Mr. President, as of right now, the Parks Board had indicated that July the fifth would be the time we would open the shelters up. Now, we can change that, we don't, don't have a meeting now until the first of June, but we could go on a case-by-case basis too, if you want to do that, to make sure that people know that there isn't some type of limit, and, uh, you know, if they want their restrooms open, it's going to be an extra charge, that, that type of thing, so, you know, like you said, our, our street department utilities do a heck of a job, and then all it wants to have to come back down to re, restore toilet paper and things like that on the weekend, so we need to come up with a, a situation for those people too, so.
Understand correct, or completely, and, uh, again, I believe this is more of a Parks Board issue than ours. I appreciate you saying that, but, um, again, the one other thing I might add, and, and just kind of in defense of the Parks Board's decisions, is they make decision based upon the best available information given to them at the time. Uh, they fully understand that they are not bound to anything that is said by anyone else, um, other than those have legally binding authority, and so far, nothing presented tonight is. The other thing to keep in mind is that Parks Board does not control, uh, if Fall Festival goes, they do not control if the, uh, Fourth of July fireworks happen. Those are individual corporations and/or groups that do that, that has nothing to do with the Parks Board as to whether or not that's been allowed to move forward or not, and the cancellation of both of those is, has nothing to do with the Parks Board.
That's correct.
And I do want to add that when people call into the office, um, we do tell them that the park is available, it's open, uh, it's just you can't reserve it, and by reserving it, that means the restrooms would be open if you reserve it. So the restrooms will remain closed, but people can still come in and use the park as is, if it's open and available.
And the one thing I might add concerning the restrooms, and a lot of people have brought that up, uh, the issue with the restrooms is that over the years, we've suffered tens of thousands of dollars in vandalism to the restrooms whenever they were left open during the weekend, and that's unfortunate, but it, it continues to occur, which is why ten years ago, five years ago, the Parks Board took the unfortunate but necessary step to lock those up, to close the business each day, which includes the close of business on Friday, uh, unless the park has been opened or reserved for someone.
Yes, that, that happened in, uh, early sixteen, yes.
Any further questions or comments?
I'll get with Sandy and Amber tomorrow, and we'll come up with a plan then, I'll let you know.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll move on now to the next part of new business, which is Charlestown Manor Phase One Cash Bond Reduction.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, the developer of Charlestown Manor has asked for a reduction in his cash, cash bond from a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred to a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. The items that would be reduced would cover fifteen hundred feet of sidewalk that's been installed, two curb ramps, and twenty-four street trees. Um, I have inspected, and those are all put in, in accordance with Town Code.
Council questions or comments?
I have done.
Mr. Farmer, do you want to weigh in on this at all?
I do not.
Okay, since some of the public may reside here, is there anyone from the public who has a comment concerning this? Seeing none, we'll go back to the council for potential action.
I'll move to, um, reduce the cash bond for Charleston Manor Phase One.
Second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, the next issue tonight is a memorandum of understanding between the town of Ellisville and Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation for a twelve-foot path on South Poplar Drive. I believe I saw Superintendent Jerry Sanders here, so anyone want to speak to this? Jerry's still unmuted, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. Waited the whole meeting to unmute myself, and when I had that chance, I didn't do it. Um, this is a, another perfect example of how well, uh, the town of Ellisville and, and Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation, uh, works together. Uh, we are definitely, uh, partners in providing, um, education and many other services to our, our community, and I think it's a partnership that really, um, many, uh, other communities, uh, should follow. Uh, but this, uh, opportunity, uh, is for the town of Ellisville and, and the Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation to partner together to build a trail, uh, between going up from, uh, forty-six up Poplar Street, uh, and, uh, then turning on to School Street, and then on up to Edwood Drive, and, and on up, uh, to the high school as the first phase. Uh, Vicki, um, Coffee, who's our nutrition services director for the school corporation, she wrote a grant, and it's, um, a grant out of the Indiana Department of Health, the Division of Nutrition and Physical Activity. Uh, it's a, uh, ta- tactical urbanism grant, and the whole purpose of this grant is to provide a, a safe place for, uh, the community, for students, uh, to, uh, gain, uh, physical activity. And so, Vicki and, uh, Mike Farmer and different members of the, the, uh, street department have collaborated on this project, which, uh, involves the town of Ellisville, uh, providing the labor and equipment, and then the school corporation providing and paying for the, uh, materials and any easements that, that need to be taken care of. Uh, Mike, I don't, Farmer, I don't know if you want to add, uh, a little bit there too?
Well, actually, uh, you pretty much summed up what we're doing. We're looking forward to doing the project. Uh, as I've said before, uh, we do not have the, uh, monies to put into putting a entire trail system throughout our community at this point, and these opportunities to start the trail system, a little or a lot, uh, are welcomed and exciting to, uh, we're excited to be part of it, so we appreciate, uh, the school corporations, um, working with us on this, and eventually, um, someday we'll have trails throughout the town, and this is a small step to, uh, connect forty-six up to the highway, eventually back to the tet, uh, Town Hall, and hopefully out to Flatwoods Park sometime in the future, so we're pretty excited about getting this trail in. We've been talking about it for quite some time.
The, uh, the grant is for ten thousand dollars, and the school corporation will pay for the rest of the materials, um, which I think amounts to about eighteen thousand dollars if I'm not, if I'm mistaken, Mike.
Yeah, that's correct.
And, uh, and so if you approve this, uh, MOU tonight, then I will take it to, uh, our school board next Monday night, and, uh, I believe the project will start sometime in June.
That is correct.
Thank you very much, both of you. Are there council questions considering this MOU? Public questions or comments concerning this MOU and the partnership between ourselves and our BBSC? I'd just like to comment again, Dr. Sanders, thank you so much for the partnerships that we enjoy. Uh, it's truly a pleasure to work with your group because it does nothing but benefit everyone, and, and really, that's, uh, been a boon to this, this community as a whole, even outside the town.
It's such a pleasure to work with everybody, uh, that's associated with the Town of Elsville. Uh, when I'm talking to them, I can genuinely feel that they, they deeply care for the School Corporation, and that's a really good feeling. I just appreciate that.
Back to the council. Is there motions concerning this MOU?
Hey, do I need to read that whole thing, Scott? The whole?
I think Darla would prefer that we did, yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Elsville and Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation for 12 that foot.
Yes.
At Popular Drive.
And I'll second this one. Sandy, when you have the opportunity.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
On agenda, thank you, Dr. Sanders. Next on the agenda is discussion concerning virtual meetings, and I presume the return to in-person meetings.
So as you are probably aware, um, Governor Holcomb issued his, uh, 14th renewal of the, uh, Public Emergency Declaration back in April, and that is, um, Executive Order 2111. He extended the Public Health Emergency through and including May 31st, 2021. And as part of that emergency declaration, he extended Executive Order 20 dash 09, which allowed municipalities to have virtual meetings. So the legislature has passed a statute that took effect, um, April 20th, 2021, which sets forth what municipalities have to do if you want to have, um, some, you want to allow some town council members to attend meetings electronically. So I will go through that briefly, but there are some caveats, and, uh, so much so to the point that the Municipal Lawyers Association is going to have a workshop on this in June when we have our annual, um, Municipal Lawyers Meeting. But in any event, before COVID, under this particular section of the statute that I'm referring to, which is Indiana Code 5 dash 14 dash 1.5 dash 3.5, municipalities could enact a policy which would allow some of their board members to attend a meeting electronically. However, that board member was limited in what he or she could do. That board member could participate in the meeting, but that board member could not vote on the final action, and the minutes would have to show or reflect that person as not being present. So the legislature has amended 3.5, and in the future, um, town council members may, uh, attend the meetings electronically, but there are some caveats. Uh, whatever platform you use has to allow all participate, all members of the governing body to communicate with each other, and you have to allow the public to attend and observe the meeting, and just like we do now, attend means, um, live or in real time. So by Zoom or, you know, Team or WebEx or whatever form you want to use, but you, if you're going to allow the public to attend, you can't just, um, record it on cats and say, go look at it on the internet. The public has to be able to watch the meeting as it's occurring. Um, the, uh, um, if you attend as a town council me- member, if you attend the meeting by an electronic means of communication, you can, in fact, participate in the vote and take final action. There are some meetings at which you may not attend electronically if you want to vote. That includes meetings where you adopt a budget, make a reduction in personnel, initiate a referendum, establish or increase a fee, so that means utilities, anytime the rates change, um, if you want to vote, you have to be present. If you establish or increase a penalty through an ordinance, which would, that covers a lot of the planning and zoning issues, you have to attend in person. If you want to use your eminent domain authority or establish, raise, or renew a tax, that council member has to be present at that meeting in person in order to vote on those issues. There are some sections of the statute that discuss what happens if your technology fails. So, uh, and I have some questions about how this works because the question obviously is, what if the failure is not on the part of the town council, but it's on the, the failures on the end of the person who's trying to attend the meeting? But in any event, um, if there is a, an interruption or a failure in the electronic means of communication, um, you still have to have a quorum present. So in other words, if you start out with three people like you have tonight, you've got your quorum, but if there's some technological failure and one of you drops off for some reason, and obviously you've just lost your quorum. So, um, a member of the public who is not present, um, and who attends and observes the meeting, if there's a, an interruption in the technology so that that person can't attend and observe, that may cause you some problems. And so I'm not sure how to fix that or how to track that, like I said, to, in order to determine whether the failure was on the town council's end or on the observer's end. But if there is a break in the communication and the public is not allowed to observe, that could cause you some problems later. If you want town council members to be able to participate in meetings electronically, you have to, you must adopt a written policy. The statute doesn't say what you have to include. The statute tells you what you might want to think about and include in that policy. And that includes limiting the number of members who can participate electronically at any one meeting, limiting the total number of meetings that you will conduct electronically, um, requiring a member who plans to attend a meeting electronically to notify the presiding officer within a certain period of time before the meeting. So those are three things the statute lists that you might want to consider. When Sandy or the town clerk prepares the minutes, you have to state the member, each member of the governing body who was physically present, who participated by, um, electronic means or who was absent, which Sandy tends to do anyway. You have to identify specifically the electronic means of communication that was used for the meeting, how the public was allowed to observe and attend the meeting, and all votes taken during the electronic meeting have to be done by roll call, which you do anyway. So at least 50% of the members of the governing body have to be present at any meeting. So only two of you can let, uh, attend electronically at one time. So at least three of you have to be present in person for any meeting. The statute also states that a member of the governing body can't attend more than 50% of the meetings in a calendar year electronically. So you're all limited in how many meetings you can attend electronically, unless you're in the military, you're ill, uh, you have to go to a funeral, there's an emergency, or something of that nature. You are allowed to attend two consecutive meetings electronically, but then you have to have a break. So you could go to attend one in person, two, and attend one in person. So that's a basic outline of what the statute says. And to answer the question that we discussed earlier, um, as far as the public attending, uh, can we come up with some sort of hybrid system where the public can attend in public and also by Zoom or by video? And the answer is yes, because I think the statute contemplates, um, that members of the public will be able to do either or. But again, you have to have a policy, and you have to come up with the means by which people will be able to participate electronically. And the Municipal Lawyers Association suggests that you take into consideration people who, like my parents, who don't have computers, don't want a computer, um, how can they participate? Can they participate by phone on their landline? Um, things of that nature. And that's especially important, um, not only for town council meetings where you have public comment, but when you have public hearings on certain issues like the budget or bonds and all the public hearing requirements that you have for the Plan Commission and the BZA. We have to, um, have a policy, uh, that makes it clear how people can participate, whether it's, like I said, by landline, by Zoom. Are you going to accept comments by email, uh, before the meeting? Are you going to accept text messages? Is that a comment before the meeting? So, um, I think that covers most of what we've talked about. Yes, I think you can do a hybrid where the public can be, uh, present or participate electronically. Yes, the town council can have electronic or can participate electronically as long as you follow the basic guidelines of the statute and you have a policy. But you are not going to be able to do what we've been doing now, once the public health emergency, um, is discontinued. You are not going to be able to do what we're doing now, which is have all of you participate electronically. You're going to be limited in how many of you can do that. You do not have to adopt a policy. You can just go back to saying we're going to have in-person meetings, period, end of story.
Does that, did you have a date certain that it was going to take place, or is that to be announced still?
Well, um, you can, you can start working on your policy, um, right now and, um, put it into place as soon as the town council passes it. In other words, I think you could start your in-person meetings immediately if you wanted to.
But we would still have to have a policy if we're going to include anyone electronically, whether that be council members or the public, we'd have to have that in place first.
Yes. You'll have to, we will have to figure out how to do that.
And I know there's some technological hurdles, particularly with Town Hall, that we're going to need to overcome before we can really go down that road. Uh, at least maybe minor ones, but some that are going to have to be ironed out.
Yes.
Are there counsel comments concerning this?
I have a question. Okay, before COVID and Zoom and all this, is this just all this that you're talking about because of all the COVID and the Zoom and everything being involved? Because before we, before all COVID happened, what did we do for people? You know, like your mom and dad that didn't have any way to communicate?
Well, they came to the meetings, they came to the meetings in, in public. I mean, there was no provision for people to generally participate electronically.
Okay, so if like, everything was lifted and we went back to normal, whatever, then we wouldn't have to worry about all this, right? This is just why the COVID's going on, the Zoom and all that, the governor?
Well, no, um, right now, you can do what you are doing and what we have been doing for over a year. You can meet electronically or virtually. But once the public health emergency ends, whenever that is, I mean, right now, the governor has tapped it for May 31st. He could extend it month by month, which is what he has been doing. While the public emergency is in place, you are still allowed to meet virtually, just like we have been doing. Everybody present through Zoom. The policy or the statute that I'm talking about is, outlines for you what you can do once the public health emergency has been lifted. You will not, you will have more restrictions on virtual meetings than you have now, in other words.
Okay.
The legislature also enacted a brand new section, which is Indiana Code 5 dash 14 dash 1.5 dash 3.7, which essentially memorializes or codifies what all the municipalities have been doing for the last year, a year and a half during COVID. It basically says, you can do what we're doing now, but you have to, you have to have a quorum. The public has to be allowed to attend. In the minutes, we have to record who attended, um, who was absent, how the meeting was conducted, um, that the public was allowed to observe, and all votes have to be taken electronically. And we do all that now. So that new section just tells everybody, if there's another public health emergency in the future, you can go back to the meetings the way we're doing it, but this is how you're going to do it.
Okay.
So did I forget, I make it first? Vote to go back to in-person meetings and then work on that for the next, uh, council session for, uh, to get a policy for remote calling in for the public, correct? It doesn't have to be all at the same time.
No. No, you could go back to in-person meetings whenever you want.
Okay.
I guess my question i- is a couple of things. Um, I guess first a comment is that, I don't see why, given the fact that the technology is, for the most part, proven, yes, we've had our issues, but it continues to function for us just fine, and as it does everyone else. I don't see us ever going back to either show up at the meeting or even get to say anything. That doesn't seem realistic to me, nor does it seem fair. Um, I, I am concerned a little bit about the phone calls, just taking phone calls, because then you really don't know where they're coming from or who's actually speaking. And some issues come up over time where, quite frankly, people that want to skew an issue or make an issue seem bigger than it actually is, or getting people from all the way across the country to call in that, quite frankly, don't even know where Elsville is to begin with, and I'm just, as an example. Um, but I, I think with some safeguards and some common sense, I think this is something, definitely a road we need to go down for a variety of different reasons, including the convenience of a whole lot of different folks. That said, there are some technological hurdles we've got to, got to work on. Um, given that, A, that we're at a bare quorum here, and we don't have the other two council people with us, and given the fact we have some technological hurdles, are you two okay to maintain this for one more meeting, um, digitally, and then give everyone the opportunity to formulate both the plan and the technology with the intention to going back to the first meeting in June, being in person, and potentially hybrid at that point?
Uh, Scott, if I could add, on the Zoom meetings, there is, um, dial-in numbers, and so they wouldn't have the video, but they can dial in by phone and hear the audio, and they could also ask questions that way.
Right, and I do get that, but i- when you come to a council meeting in person, you have to give not only your name, but you have to sign in with a, a place of residence, as opposed to just calling in saying, hey, I'm from 123 North Main Street, which we know doesn't exist.
Hmm. Well, the Municipal Lawyers Association did suggest that, uh, we, we do try to come up with a policy or find the technology to try and figure out whether or not people are really calling in from where they say, because they understand that there are going to be some people out there who are going to think it's amusing to try to scuttle meetings, uh, just for fun. Um, so that is something to think about. And, um, I just, this is just my thought, and I don't know that anybody else has had a problem with this or, or even worried about it. But, you know, when we do the meetings, there's always the chat box. And so my concern a little bit is particularly not necessarily during town council meetings, but, um, you know, during public hearings or particularly during, uh, planning and zoning meetings or BZA meetings, you know, is a chat considered a comment that needs to be recorded or shown on the record? Because the people who chat is, you know, generally they're identified, but, uh, it may be just a, a sentence or so. So is that something that has to be recorded and is, is part of the record? Um, and that's just a question I have. Because if it's recorded and they're there, that means that they're an aggrieved party for purposes of remonstrating, so, um, I don't know. So that's something to think about, too.
There is the option to, uh, show your, um, chat, but you can also talk directly to another person privately through our Zoom meeting without that being recorded anywhere.
Hmm. Well, I, I do want to say that on the couple of Plan Commission meetings we've had, that people have been chatting, it comes up as a way to save the file, so I keep all those in our files. Now, that doesn't get anything that's private between two people, that's just the general chat.
Well, I guess the question I've got in Darla, I'm sure we don't have an answer to it yet. Are we going to be bound by potentially some FCC guidelines concerning, for want of a better term, use of profanity and or images?
You know what? That's a good question. I, I have not even thought about that. I, I have not even thought about that, but you can eject people from the meetings if they are being unruly. So I would say that comes under the unruly category, and no, we're not going to be responsible, but I think at some point we need to kick them out, so.
Okay, a- as long as there's a mechanism allowed under the laws to allow us to move them and/or end the meeting, because there's been a couple of pretty tragic occurrences across the country. Is there more council comments before we open up to the public?
First, Scott, are you trying to say that I should leave the meetings then, because I'm unruly?
Not yet, but we'll give you the shot.
Yeah, all right.
All right, are there public comments concerning this?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, I want to thank the council for this discussion. I, I think the state legislature made a good effort at getting us into the modern world. Darla, I can appreciate your parents just having what we call twisted pair technology, the old telephone line, but there are ways to accommodate them to the extent their technology permits. I agree, Scott, that we have, for better, for lack of a better way to describe it, the FCC restrictions on what you can and cannot broadcast. I think possibly putting a statement in whatever resolution or policy you establish for the town that basically refers to it and say that people will be removed from the meeting that violate those standards? Question mark. That's a Darla question.
Well, I think, go ahead, Russ, I'm sorry. I think meeting hosts can certainly mute people, so that's, you know, if someone's starting to use profanity or something along those lines, that's one way to, to take care of it.
Well, honestly, it's no different than us having some.
Right, somebody there, a person who's doing it.
I realize this is.
The marshal could take care of it and just escort them out the door, but.
Yeah. I realize there's a lot to consider, but I want to thank you all for going down this road, because we don't have our grandparents' technology, and the technology is going to get more inclusive as time passes. And I, I want to just make one other comment, I've made it before, that in BZA in particular, we had 87 people show up and comment, including live video showing the, the effect the proposal might have on the neighbors, and you can't get that without having remote input. It's just amazing what this technology opens up in the way of both the quantity of people who can respond and participate and the type of information that can be gathered. But thank you, and I look forward to the future and seeing how this works out. Thank you, Scott, go ahead.
Um, I guess back, my question to the council, are you two willing to continue the next meeting as we are today with the voiced intent to return to live meetings, meeting in-person meetings in June, and then giving our people essentially three, maybe four weeks, depending upon how many meetings fall, to work out not only a, I guess, a policy ordinance, however we're going to put it, as well as the technological issues?
I'm leaning towards going back to in-person next meeting and working out technological issues kind of, you know, for the meeting after next. Because I, I've had a lot of pressure to, for us to open back up and, and get in-person meetings, and especially from the constituent that needs to, that wanted to, it wouldn't be us, but the Plan Commission, there's some things that limited them coming, technology gating, so to speak, and I don't know, for having that issue with town council on stuff. But on the other hand, I don't necessarily want to gate people because they can't physically get to the meetings either, so kind of in a conundrum right now.
I can understand that, again, why I was suggesting we, you know, tonight fix one additional meeting as this, and then basically giving people that month notice that our intent is to return in June to live in-person meetings with some addendums, meaning that we would have the ability at that point for outside people to, to access the meeting remotely.
I do think it was pretty much decided or discussed, I don't think it was a vote that, at the last meeting, that we would wait till June 1st.
No, what was said was Scott and Trevor, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, that he's saying basically, he said basically the same thing he did now, that he wait and visit it, is June 1st, correct, Scott?
You know, to be really honest with you, I know that was the sense of the discussion, the actual text of the discussion. I don't remember, and the reason that I know that we had picked June 1st was knowing this was coming up, but we really didn't know the ins and outs specifically of the legislation and/or at that time what the governor was going to do or order. We were trying to buy ourselves a little bit of time to, to work out the, the minor, I guess, minutia of it, to make sure that everyone could participate on the same level as they do today, because I'm, I'm like William, I'm kind of in the conundrum as well, I want to go back to in-person meetings, but I hate to cut off some folks who feel either threatened to return to person meetings because of the COVID virus and/or are hampered by other issues that doesn't allow them to participate. So then we return to in-person, and now they're cut off from what we've been doing for a year, versus hoping to work something out within the next at least two to three weeks that allows everyone to participate on the same level we are tonight.
Well.
Go ahead.
My suggestion is, look at the statute that I, I did send to everybody, and shoot me your thoughts, because you're locked into some, in some aspects, because again, at least three of you have to be present at every meeting in person, no matter what, and you're limited to doing only half of your meetings every year virtually. So you've got those two issues, plus the meetings that you have to attend in person in any event. So I think it's just going to require all the council members communicating with each other to make sure there's always three people here, and make sure you're not exceeding your quota, I guess, of how many meetings you can attend virtually. And then the rest of the policy is whatever you want in terms of what sort of, what you want to impose on each other in terms of your policy. The statutes made it clear that you can, you can develop a policy that's more restrictive than what the legislature's come up with, but you can't make it less restrictive. So, and I can start to put together an ordinance or a policy for you, but I will leave the council's input on what other sorts of policies you would like to have in that.
I mean, I know from the, from the aspect of the council remotely, that's not even factoring into me, because if we vote to go in person, I'll be there. And I, the other council may be, my only concern is the remote for the public. We were there in person before, there's no reason we can't be there in person again. That's my thoughts on that.
No, I agree with you completely, and that's kind of one, I wanted to go ahead and do one more here, that way everybody gets to hear what our policy's going to be, because if we go in public, then people will be limited as to what they can comment on or can't comment on if they're not there. And then again, if we're voicing the intent now that we go back in June, we go back in June. I honestly don't think we can even control BZA and/or planning, I think that's up to them individually, if we set the policy as to what they can do. Am I correct, Darla?
Um, I think you could have a general policy for the town. It would be helpful to get the Plan Commission's and the BZA's input on how they want to do things, yes.
But if we.
And make that, and have them incorporate that as part of their procedures that are already posted online, so.
I guess my question though is, if we vote to not allow remote or electronic access, then they couldn't individually do it, because this would be the policy of the town.
Well, I think, I think they could have their own policies.
Okay, so what we do is kind of irrelevant concerning what they do. Is that what I'm hearing? Think about that one, because I'm not.
Let me think about that, Scott.
I, I just want to make sure that we're not going down a road where we put everybody in a bind by one thing we do, or we come to loggerheads between what amounts to the three or four boards that meet on a regular basis, being us and Parks and BZA and Planning. I want to make sure that we have some semblance of a unified policy for everyone, as opposed to each board doing it somehow differently, and then the public really being left with questions. So again, I'll go back to the other council members, how do you wish to proceed with the next meeting?
I would like to make a motion that we meet in person for the June 14th meeting, which is the first meeting in June. And by that time, by our next virtual meeting, which will be the last meeting in May, we have a policy for remote viewing and have all this stuff straightened out, all these questions straightened out. But we do make the motion that we are going in person, June 14th.
A second.
Sandy, there's been a motion and a second. Are you ready?
God Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And if I can, Darla, just to confirm, you can start off with a very broad policy, kind of a catch-all, and then whittle down as we go, correct?
Correct.
Is that something that you two would like to see, let's start off broad and then start to retract down, particularly at the next meeting and follow-on meetings, or are we wanting to be very specific in this first draft?
I prefer limiting to Zoom. And because when it comes to texts and phone calls, who are they going to call, who are they going to text, Zoom, there's one catch-all for everything, and even if they're calling in remotely with a phone call, we have some way of monitoring that. If someone calls and starts harassing us, the only thing we can do is hang up. Where Zoom, we have other functions like muting or killing the video, texting and stuff like that, we're opening ourselves up. I, I think limiting it to Zoom, what we've been doing, what we know, because if we limit, if we open it up to phone and texting and other things like that and email, we don't have experience with that, and we're going to be opening a can of worms, in my opinion.
I agree, and I, I would just like to see us lock Zoom down a little more than we do currently, where everyone right now is, is muted based upon their own volition, as opposed to us unmuting whenever someone wants to speak, as opposed to just because they lock it down themselves. So if we could, you know, perhaps have someone that's the, the host every week, and that way when we call upon someone, then their mic becomes live, but until then, they stay on mute, I think that's the best way to go.
And Zoom can be set up that when the meeting starts, everybody's muted.
Right, right, exactly. Okay, is there any other comments concerning this from council?
Mr. President, to start, what, what, how does this apply to the Parks Board? We've had very good luck with all our meetings this last year, we've had almost perfect attendance, except for one member that has a child in the hospital, so once the emergency is withdrawn, I guess we'd have to go back to, to the in-person meeting, is that what I understand it?
Well, if the Parks Board wants to adopt a, a policy that would allow for members to participate by Zoom, you could do it, but you'd have to follow the outlines that I discussed in, at the beginning of this discussion.
Okay, I'll talk to you about that later, thank you.
All right, thank you all very much. I'll move now to privileged of the floor, anyone having business for the council not part of our normal agenda. Russ?
Yeah, Darla, does the voting limitations and attendance limitations the legislature put on town council members also apply to members of other boards permitting virtual meetings?
It does, because the statute refers to all political subdivisions at all public agencies, so.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense? There's another section of the statute, or I mean, another section of the code that discusses the procedures for state agencies, but it's almost identical to the one that applies to governing bodies.
Okay. Well, that's enough for tonight, but email me, please, the, the codes, and I'll look them up, I want to read those state codes. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Anyone else having privileged of the floor business? Seeing none, we'll move on to supervisor comments, beginning with Mr. Farmer.
Well, only that the conversation y'all just had coincides with my thoughts about opening the town hall sometime in the near future. We're going to have a department head meeting Wednesday, we'll be discussing, discussing how to proceed and recommendations from all the department heads about opening the town hall back up for business, and then we'll bring that to the next meeting. We'll discuss everything you just talked about, and maybe help come up with the plan for creating a Zoom and in-person meeting and what we think might help, be helpful. So other than that, that's all I have.
And while I'm thinking about it, I'm sorry to intrude, Darla, I don't know the best way to do this, other than just by council voice, because I don't think we necessarily need a motion, making sure that council is good with Mike spending whatever it needs up to his spending limit to set the council chambers up for what we anticipate as virtual meetings and joint virtual and in-person meetings. Is everyone good with that?
I am.
Yes.
Mike, are you good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just want to make sure that we're all on the record with that. Other supervisor comments?
The president, speaking for the Parks Board, Mike and I have been having conversations about the playground equipment. We've received permission from the Richmond County Proceeds to utilize some property there behind basketball roads. We have estimates to replace that equipment, and we'll be getting with you here in the next month, and so if you can get, find some money to get this equipment ordered. To be honest with you, I've had more calls on no playground equipment at the Hampton Park than I have on speeding on deer run, so hopefully, we'll, we'll get with you on that, just want to give you a heads up on that.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one with other comments, we'll move to council comments.
I have none.
William?
Just that, you know, I understand a lot of this that we say does not necessarily impact directly what, what other boards are doing, and I'm not necessarily saying it should. I do think, though, that it's good for people to know where we stand, the other boards in that. It doesn't mean they can't respectfully disagree, just as I can respectfully disagree with some of their decisions. But I thank everybody for working through this, I'm delighted at the end of the tunnel, and I think we're going to be open well before any other place in Monroe County is.
Yeah, thank you, and I want to agree with you, and please don't mistake some of the things I said about their own parity within the boards as far as their ability to determine their basic outcomes, I guess, is, is not being able to address our own opinion, just.
Scott, you muted yourself.
Yeah, I'm sorry, having some power issues. Again, please don't take any comments I had today as, as anything but positive, because I agree with you. I just want to make sure that the boards have their own autonomy and the public understands that. Seeing that there's no other council comments, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, I was going to read the Gettysburg Address to everybody, but I'll second.
Sandy, please.
God Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned at 7:40.